All right, here it was at 10:00. I will call meeting to order. Please stand and join the conference.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible for the liberty and justice for all.
First, I want to agenda this, make up your own today's work session agenda. Second, all those in favor of his in the privacy say aye. Opposed, motion carries. That brings us to public comments. Anybody waiting to address the board? Please state your name and address. I guess not. Okay, announcements communications. I have three letters from individuals, one of them from Board Member Hamble, expressing their interest in the township partnering with the Land Conservancy of West Michigan for the Duck Creek Natural Area. The first one is from Rosalie Mansier. She lives on Weber Road. David Rice also sent one with regard to the Duck Creek Natural Area asking us, well, it says whether you decide to partner with the Land Conservancy or not, it's my wish that you will decide to leave this area in its natural state. And then Board Member Hamble sent a very long letter, and I believe everybody got it.
No, I never got it, but thank you for sending it to me.
This is another issue, but I underline this section. The Friends of the Fruitland Township, all they use trail, requests that Fruitland Township take on their initiative in order to make viable grant applications to services that fund nonprofits and government entities only. And she's referring to trails. I think you are asking that we could possibly eventually have a trail that connects to the Berry Junction Trail. And she's also mentioned the Duck Creek Natural Area Plan and developing trails in there as well. Terry, would you like to add anything?
Do you have a comment?
Okay.
We have been thinking for about four and a half, almost five years to envision a trail that would connect Lake Michigan with Berry Junction Trail. I don't talk to you all about that before, but we're kind of at a point where we can't move forward without some budget to do a feasibility study and then to actually start building and signing trails that may already exist. So the only way we can get funding from sources like the DNR and West Michigan Trails Alliance, they are both called up to find funding. But we need to have a government entity, a township, or another municipality be our fiduciary agents and kind of partners in doing it, because most funding doesn't go to nonprofits unless they're government nonprofits like us. So we're kind of putting out that request to the board to think about it, and hopefully in the near future, we can come to some kind of agreement that we would write grant applications in the name of the township to put funding to do it right. So that's kind of what the request is at this point, and realize it's not going to happen overnight, but we want you to start thinking about it, because if we can't get like a partnership with the township, then we may be stuck. We may have to go to other townships to ask for funding, but that's probably not going to happen, since we want the trails to be here. So it's kind of like we're up against barriers, and we realize it takes a long time to build a trail. Building up the Berry Junction Trail is an example of 20 years in the making. So I hope it doesn't take that long, but with some funding sources, we can certainly push this ahead to make it happen some place for a while. That's what we're talking about. And I just, as one of the friends of the trail, I would like to invite you all to our next meeting. We're going to talk about funding on the 27th. Yeah, that better than, yes, hopefully here. It's scheduled yet, but hopefully the 27th is when we would like to talk about funding sources and how we're going to move this forward.
Anybody have any comments about that or thoughts?
I'm not for the township doing this. We've got other things. I mean, once you start doing it for one, you're going to be asked to do it for a lot of others. And I don't think it's the taxpayers going to do this. That's my own personal opinion, and I'm looking for it.
I think just from the tenures that I've been here, the expense that's going to be involved in this is going to be astronomical. We know that just from the repay the asset, it was in the millions of dollars. I just think it's a big dream.
It's a big wish list. But, you know, part of our plan to, not to dispute what you're both saying, you know it's expensive, but perhaps some other people, part of our plan has been to use the natural area as sort of a hub, and that development should be minimal, you know that. It shouldn't cost a whole lot to just mark trails inside a natural area as a start. The other connecting trails that would connect natural area to our parks and to the lake and to Berry Junction Trail would probably mainly be share the road kinds of trails, which would just require some markings, and that's not very expensive if we can get the road commission to help us with that. So, you know, we don't know what the budget looks like even yet, but if we can get some kind of, you know, some grant applications going and then do a feasibility study to find out what it's going to cost, that will help push us forward and minimal development of trails. And they don't have to be paved trails. We're not talking about that. We're just talking about walking and hiking trails to start with.
I think it's a little bit of a cart's before the horse, because we don't know what's happening with the Duck Creek natural area. We're still on hold with Land Conservancy, so I don't know how we can really even attempt to move forward without knowing what that end process is going to be. We haven't seen the final documents yet. We approved, we approved officially our turn in hand to go ahead and even try to get rid of which, to get a commencement with them, but we're not even to that point yet, so I think, you know, it's been.
We're a little bit ahead of the game here.
Well, right, and we're just trying to think of that.
Yeah, I agree with Mary Ann and Carolyn for the fact that this is going to take a long time, it's going to take a while, and we should associate ourselves with that kind of right now. You don't want to take it on yourself to do whatever you want to do.
I know, I have a favor of Trance, and I consulted with her on several patients about how she was able to get the money, because she stepped one down Dexter Road, and grant funding was a huge source, but I think the township also put in $200,000 to $250,000 per section. And I asked her risks, how were you able to do that? Yeah, they have a larger tax base than we do.
She also mentioned that the company that was doing the work, the engineers that were doing all the work, they managed to find some funds for her as well.
Yeah, that's what Joe made in their time and energy.
Now, all that safety knowledge too.
They do have, yeah, they got a public safety knowledge, and they got other knowledge for their water.
They were took kids to school or something.
Safe routes to school.
They have D O T.
That makes a big difference too.
We could do that too. I'm not trying to dismiss any sources in this.
I think it's just too early to even think about it.
Anyone that wishes to read the content of these emails, they're available here. Or letters, excuse me. Unfinished business. Don't have anything? Does anybody have anything they want? I've read out unfinished business. Moving on, we'll move on to new business. The first item is a land revision request for a lot of 25 butterfield woods. Based on our ordinances, this is something the township or the asked to approve, and Vale Jensen, our county administrator, has done a great summary of the request. I don't know that we really need to discuss it today, but I wanted to hopefully, I don't have an opportunity to look at it anyways. If you have any questions, Chris here with us today. And maybe you can answer some questions for the board. Basically, it goes to divide the existing parcel.
Two lots.
Yeah.
There was a landlocked triangle sticking to there that was not able to access, so what they've done, what they're suggesting is to split, because it was still two lots, but one was landlocked, is to split it back into two, so you kind of cut that in the middle and then across to that way, that little quarter piece that is right on the course isn't non-usable or non-sellable or all, or just kind of redraw the lines.
Right, and it's not creating that in front of us, which is, which is a big concern for us.
Well, that we tell the regulations in the state or whatever, the.
Val shop.
I can't see any reason why not.
All right, that's the beginning of Jennifer Monday. For any decision or motion. Moving on, we're approved in maintenance supervisor position. As I noted, November 5th, I sent out an email notifying that I'm terminating the implement of Jerry's effort, and I gave you the reasons why. I received an email from Mike asking that we reconsider that, so now is the time to discuss it if you wish.
I would like to hear from Carolyn, because I understand she's the one that saw this or whatever, ran across it or ran upon it. I'd like to know what happened.
What happened to discuss it?
Or not. I didn't know if it was pro.
Yeah, I think let's do that in closed session.
Okay. That's what I did.
So any response? Anything you can put on up, looking for.
Well.
Supervisor position.
Right, I guess I was looking to make Steve our permanent caretaker person, but if we're going to be discussing why, and how tos and closed session, I think we, I'd like to move this to after closed session. As we discuss this, we'll just at that point. Is there any other new business? If not, I'll entertain a motion to go to move it to closed session.
Motion to do so.
Second. Terry? Danny?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
And I, yes. Got to ask each other.
Is the videotape still on, Oscar?
Oscar, you need to turn off your videotape.
Oscar, turn off your video.
I'll plug it or whatever. That would be no.
I got it, thank you. Okay.
All right, so we had moved maintenance supervisor position under our closed session, so I'd like to bring that back up, letting you know that we put Steve pretty much in the position, and I'm not considering bringing anybody else in to do leaves with him. He's doing a great job getting them up. I'd like to offer him paid holidays. He's well beyond the 90-day period, probationary period. So anyways, I'm asking that we pay him for yesterday and increase his salary. He's asked for an increase in salary to what Jerry was making. Is he currently making $12?
Oh, yes.
Okay, to $16.50 an hour. And as.
Motion to do so.
Is there support?
Support.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Is he, is he going to be overseen by, by you again?
I'm asking to check in every Monday. We'll discuss what is going on.
Do they have a schedule of what they do every day?
I put together two different schedules, and he has both of them. I sat down after, let's say after Jerry was let go, and went through them again with them, what the expectations are at Township Hall and the property here is first, get leaves up, get the snow plowed, get the salt down, you know, priority, and then move on to the museum and deep every building and Berry Junction Trail, wherever it is, they spend their time during the day. I think he understands it.
Couple of quick questions. Does he know that we are not going to be giving many health and health care?
Yes.
Okay. And does he also know that, and this is just a question since I know they have refrigerator and stuff, that we have like a working lunch, and that it's not just like you go and take care of the lunch hour, is that how we operate?
He probably didn't until last week. I actually said to him, if you, you know, I said, I understand Jerry had refrigerator and microwave and whatever, coffee maker, we have all that stuff here, you are more than welcome to come in the hall and eat your lunch and go back out. He knows that he gets paid for his lunch hour, so pretty much insinuate, I hope he took it as an insinuation from me that you're not to be putting that stuff over there.
Right, I mean, we can take our lunch, and we wait in residence while we're late, or at least we do for our employees. I mean, I realize he's got to eat, I'm not saying he's got to drive around.
No, I know, it doesn't sound like you take a half hour and you have your lunch. No.
Because you're being paid for it.
Yes.
We did the same thing. You pay for your lunch, but your work.
Sometimes it's a fifteen minutes, sometimes it's a twenty-five.
I've got a question. I don't, like I say, I don't ever recall a microwave or anything. As long as that's over there, why doesn't that just come out? It probably was put in there, I mean.
Jerry's already, you picked it up.
Oh, it's gone.
It's gone.
Okay, I thought it was just.
He was asked to.
Make arrangements with me, because I asked to be there.
Okay, I didn't realize it was his stuff.
It was his stuff that he brought in. There was also a lot of equipment he brought in of his own, after he was told not to, such as a tractor and a leaf blower, and I don't even, I want to say possibly even a chainsaw, I don't know. So I guess we'll address that if it comes up next year.
It's a little hard there, it's going to take a little bit longer picking up leaves by itself.
Yeah, and he struggled with that stupid big thing that's on the back of that truck last week. He had all the leaves into big piles out here in the park, and he was trying to figure out how to get them to suck it up without moving the thing around, but he figured it out eventually. Took him some time.
It was, you know, the I P that he did well, he was, and that was every thirty, and he had big piles.
Okay, is there any other discussion on the seat? All right, let's move on to board comments. Republic Services notice that recycling fee increases. So I had mentioned earlier in the year that Republic Services had taken over Chef Containers, our recycling service. I met with Brenda and Kerry from that company, oh my goodness, in the spring, and they said, well, you know, all this stuff's happening with recycling, and I had just seen something on the news from President Obama had said that recycling, China wasn't going to take our recycling anymore, or they're being really fussy about what they're going to take, and the fact that the United States doesn't have the capabilities of sorting, so, yeah, so I've been expecting it, and he came in, Kerry came in by himself another time after that, said, yeah, the recycling prices are going up, I said to Kerry, he said, you know that we're in our budget? We set our budget April 1st. Could you give us till at least January 1st? You know, it's going to still hurt our budget, but at least not so bad as June, when I met with him. Well, I got an email from him on October 22nd. It says, Jed Brown forwarded your email to me regarding, Jed Brown was a previous supervisor, and that's why I just hope to contact from Republic. I'll see what other options to really, you know, I understand the financial concern to Gavin, and have done what I can do to push the fees out as far as possible. Unfortunately, beginning January 1st, I will have to implement a $70 per time processing fee. So he is at least giving us till January 1st. So then I sent him back an email, can you give me an approximate cost of how many tons for a 30-yard container based on our customers we've been using, so we can kind of get a feel for how much it might go up? And he responded that it appears about $56 is going to be our increase. And I was envisioning all these huge costs. I think, you know, $56 is probably the reason enough to continue recycling, but it is something we're going to have to disagree about in time. Recycling and, you know, do we increase the price again? And I guess it'll depend then where we end up in our budget, or the.
Sure, we're going to address this till then.
Unless you want to take it up to January, I, we'll be in the budgeting process by then. I'll start it, actually, next month, I'll start my portion of the budgeting process.
Any thoughts on that?
I think we're going to have to raise the fees over there. Well, I mean, our fees, when you do it at home, this is still a good price. And the thing of it is, they're going to scream, they're going to holler. They screamed and hollered when we raised it, what was it, 50 cents or 25 or something? But if you don't, if they don't want to pay the upcharge or pay more, then have Get Home Service pickup, because, you know what, we can't keep going in depth.
No.
At that energy station. I don't mean we're supposed to make money on it, but we should break even on it, and we're not charging enough how we're there now, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, we're in the black right now, and that, and we're watching. You see a report every, every, what, quarter?
Month.
Okay. Watching it carefully.
And like I say, in the winter, I don't think it's as bad, but in the summertime, there's a lot more people using it.
We have an extra container and stuff.
Yeah, and I think, I think we're going to have to up the sack or the.
Yeah, the staff will definitely want to look at.
We're going to look at all aspects of the.
Just verify it was ton of just.
We're going to try to do that before day, but the election. Sucked me out last week.
Do you have a copy of that? I probably figured it.
No, but I can go through and look at them all, and then do an evaluation.
That kind, he gave us an average of that. You're welcome to that. All right, and Board Member Hamble's educational suggestions. Kerry had sent out a email to everybody on November 2nd with some thoughts of hers. And as a public health educator and environmentalist, she's willing to give some free sessions here at the Township Hall on different things, and I'm going to turn it over to you. You go ahead and talk about it.
Okay, well, it started with this discussion about recycling, actually, because my brother is one of the supervisors at the Burbank Recycle Center in Los Angeles, one of the biggest ones in the world, sent me the notice about China, you know, cutting off the supply of recycled goods, because they can't take our recycling anymore, which is what's raising our costs here to recycle it. And as someone who wants to represent the residents of this township, I think it's time to show a little bit of our leadership in educating people about why recycling has worked for 40 years, but now it's not working anymore. And we need to educate people about that, and if we want to keep our costs down and doing this wonderful service to the township of helping them recycle, we need to educate people, and there's just a whole bunch more to it than just that. But my thinking is, as a health educator and as a community organizer for many years, I want to hear more from our residents and get them more involved in decision-making at this level. I mean, we are good leaders, I totally respect everybody's job here, we've all been doing a good job in the last six years since I've been here, but I think we need to step it up one more, one more step to involve more input from our township.
How do you see us doing that? I mean, the e-newsletter is about, yeah, if I ask a question, I get maybe one response.
Right, you get people.
This is, this is like a good point you're making, because I think in the last six years, I've seen more people come out to fight the dis golf course than anything. Okay, so what is, there's some, there's big problems that people want to express, you know, their opinions about, they need a forum, they need a place to do that. So my proposal, my thinking is that we need to make more open meetings to the public to come and express themselves, so we get a sense of where they're coming from and what they, what they want.
How are these arrowed?
Okay. These, what I proposing would be special meetings, like the township or the inquiry and all type meetings, where there's a topic at the, you know, top of the agenda, and people come to hear about that topic from experts, from us possibly, but also from each other, like where are you coming from, where do you stand? Before it becomes a big fight that divides us, let's get the facts, let's get, you know, information that's, that's reliable on the table, so that people can look at it before they make any decisions, before they vote for us in the next election, they know, you know, what the facts are, what the issues are, that they should be paying attention to. So my proposal is pretty simple, we just set a schedule for maybe four meetings in the next year, town hall meetings, with a topic for each one. We can start with recycling. We could also talk about, you know, maintenance of our parks and public township properties. We could talk about other things like where we want to go with our new economy here. We have two beautiful lakes in our township, Creeks and Giant Lake, Michigan out there, that are all sort of calling for development of recreational use. There's all kinds of things we can do to build community here, and I know I'm an outlier, and no other people don't agree with me about this, but I would like to make a remark to put this township in the 20th century. I mean, I think it's time that we start joining with other townships in Michigan too, to do things to help build our economy, help build our tax base to make it stronger, so we can do more things, bring more people into our parks, create events for people. So one of the topics I was thinking is like, let's have a meeting just for activists and volunteers that want to create events, like a festival here in the park, or some tournaments and races on the lake, paddling boats, races or hikes through the township on our beautiful trails, you know, all kinds of things that we could be doing to help build community here. So that's what I'm proposing, and I'm here to lead the way, if you haven't been near support, to set a schedule of, let's say, starting in the new year in the spring, Township Hall meeting.
Are you saying Township Hall meeting where we're all, it's up regular, like working, sitting out there?
No, I'm saying.
But you're inviting us to be a part of this.
Well, as many.
That's what I guess I need to do.
Well, as many people as want to be there, you don't have to. I mean, we have, we have it set up, it's open to the public in the public house, and you, being a public and resident here, you also need to be invited in. We want leaders.
My answer to that, like you said, is pretty simple, is that we've been elected by the township to present that as well. And we have open meetings, and anybody can come and discuss whatever they want.
These are board meetings, they are.
And we haven't seen anybody come up yet, other than you, to come and discuss this or whatever. My feeling is, if you want to go with it, I think you should go out by yourself and have your own meeting, whatever, somewhere.
And not in the township.
But not in the township. That's my opinion.
Yep. But these are the township issues that we need to discuss.
No, they're your issues.
We haven't heard anybody come.
You haven't heard anybody from the township come to our meetings to even discuss this? And I don't think.
I can just put it on the table, huh?
You're always putting it on. Do you remember the time that you put on the table about having a community garage sale at the ecology station? And Sam sat right, yes, you did, and Sam sat right there and said to you, okay, if you want to do this, you go figure it out, you come back and present it to the board, and we'll discuss it then. You never came back, and that was the end of the garage sale at the ecology station to meet the neighbors and be friends. Yes, you did, you sat right there and said it.
I really don't remember that, but, but it's the same thing now. I'm saying that there are people, I've got a list of about 150 people.
Well, then have them come to your house or have them come somewhere.
They have them, that's why I'm saying, I got a list of names from people coming to my house, we've had meetings at my house, that I love them, which I call community meetings, because they're just about gardening and, you know, issues that people want to talk about, which should be, but, okay, so.
I appreciate your passion, I mean, I think your, the things that you have are great ideas, I think recycling and actually the rest is great. I'm just not sure that a forum here at the township at this point is.
Be, be on the level of where it's, maybe the historical society, who's in those little lectures and slide shows. Bell, history township in the area. Same thing. You know, we have an expert that comes and talks about recycling. My brother's already volunteered to do that if he wants to. But, you know, other, other people could come into and talk about issues that are at the state level, the township level, or whatever, that are probably going to be controversial. But I think we should allow people to come and express their pain.
But if we...
But they don't know the issues at our board meetings, that's a different setting.
But if we open it for that group, we have other groups. I mean, we've had calls for Weight Watchers that wanted to meet here, and that's community people that want to meet here. And we, this, you can't do a hall for all of that. I mean, I think you've got, I think you've got a great idea. I think all of the topics that you talked about are all good ideas. I'm just not sure that it's at a level that we should...
And I agree with that. What about community education? They have a huge community centers there, yeah.
So, donors?
Their magazine goes out, if you guys get them, I get them in my mail.
Yeah.
Yeah. That'd be a good way to reach out, but if you could do it, for all of the white...
I understand, and this is not the forum for reaching out to our residents, and...
Well, you would be reaching out to residents, because they would also be invited. But then it gives them an opportunity to decide what they want to do. If they want to go over, if they don't want to go over, you know?
Nobody's wired to do it, but...
If a resident has something that's really, really hurting that they want to get out, they're going to find us, they're going to seek us out. We saw that a lot this last year.
Yeah, right.
Right, wrong, and different. People attend meetings only when it's going to benefit them.
It's not meeting.
Or if something that's going to affect them.
Delayed consequences is another great example. I mean, that's going to be whatever you want to use, what you want to...
They can turn...
Maybe that's a couple of...
That's true.
And that's it, that's it.
Mr. White says she was a meeting that we had here, but just, I'll break this, I mean, all your law, whatever, get this resolved and whatever. It was all resolved, it's not going to be back.
I, I was just getting to your ideas. I think that you have great ideas. And I'm the one who, I half recycle, and I don't, and I do think recycling is important. But I think if we open it up for that, and we're open, you have to open it up for a personal group that wants to come in here and educate our residents on something, whether it's Weight Watchers recycling or something like that. So, I just don't know, but at this point, this is the spot to start.
And the recycling spend in MI, which was on sixty minutes, I mean, it's just something that we can't...
This is not our first recycle. And we only have less than twenty percent that use the ecology station, so we've got eighty percent that are going to be of non-interest already. I just, I just think it's important that we get our residents' input before we begin the season, especially, but we're going to raise our prices.
That's a pretty, that's a pretty cut drive, too. If we're paying a certain cost, you have to pass that on.
Well, if I'm saying, what, what service are they getting for the cost that's going to be raised? I mean, there's...
Issues that we have...
There's issues that could be discussed besides just raising the price. There is teaching people how to do recycling, or that's not...
They're not allowed to do it.
That's what I'm saying, that's, that's why we need more education.
That's why I just...
Okay, that's all, so...
I think this discussion has gone on pretty...
I think it has, I think it's... So, I got, I got a second question.
Go ahead.
Um, we got our land tax recollection from the county. We have one property that is on Weber Road, it's three point three five acres. And in talking with Sally, this is a result of a split that was not approved. So, it is, it is not builtable, and it's a long section here, it's in between two homes and, I dare say it's not builtable, but, you know? It's been the tax, it's been the tax recollection, I think, about two or three times. They buy it three years later, it goes back on the tax list.
Who buys it?
Whoever.
Whoever?
Whoever. And then they realize it's not builtable, or it's not available, so they might go back to tax recollection. My, I know we don't want to be in the real estate business, and I am totally in agreement with that. But my suggestion was that maybe I could reach out to the neighboring, the two neighbors, and see if they have any interest in, in it. If they did, we could purchase it from the county and then do our, then sell it.
Where's that at?
It's between thirty-two sixty and thirty-two ten. I think we still have to do like the bid process like we did before, but it's not going to be of any value to anybody, to the neighbors. If these neighbors are not interested, then let us write the letter back to the county and tell them, we, we don't want it, we don't want it to the county's name. How wide?
No.
A hundred and twelve point three eight feet.
Yeah, leave it to go to the, ask the residents if they don't want it.
So, I thought this week, maybe I could reach out to these residents, see if there's any interest. And it's, it's, the total due is fourteen hundred dollars. I mean, but it's of no use to anybody, so, so that's my thought.
That's a good thought.
And fourteen hundred dollars is, what, that taxes? Three years?
There may be some additional fees, and I'll find that out before I call them. I think maybe some recording, so...
I have a problem when you're reaching out to the neighbors.
I don't either.
I can, I can add on to the rules on another one, and then I can...
Didn't we just give one up, did you? There was all their, it was like, Velser was only like fifty feet wide.
Oh, that was a, that was a...
Reimper.
Yeah. Take that with us off.
I don't remember that one.
It was next to that sporting house.
Yes, yes. But we didn't do it, that was the tax recollection thing.
That's beautiful place.
Yeah.
But, yes, that is the situation. But it's not tax, it's just, yes. That's all I, it's...
I just wanted to tell, y'all know that. We had Eve and Marcia and I attended the roadkill.
How was it?
It's better. It's set up a little different, so we had a new fight. Just wanted to point out that the township still remains the most committed partnership with the MCRC since twenty, or two thousand nine. We have committed two point one million dollars in road improvements. Dalton is in second at one point three million. It was all the way down to forty-two thousand for all the townships. So, we have road improvements, our funds are working.
I was going to ask them when I was there about, ever since they did the ditching on Weber Road from Peterson back there, that both sides of the road, all of a sudden you got these plants that are growing up like, or my feet tall.
Yeah.
Wonder what does it work?
I'm thinking that it came in the top, so I'll have to do this.
To put it down.
But you know what, you could ask Doug about that.
Yeah.
Ask Douggy.
I know, it's not...
He's still growing.
Yeah.
Very green.
There could be monkeys in there pretty soon.
I also wanted to just share with you, we can do with us whatever we want. Jan, who were, when he was trustee, served a wireless committee, remember years ago?
Oh, yeah.
That we were trying to enhance our services, broadband in the township. Well, Jan invited all three of us, Marcia, Melissa, and I to attend a breakfast meeting with a company called Michigan Broadband, so we did that two weeks ago. And in doing so, and each one of these passes around, we are going to call them, so, there's still an area in our township that does not have any coverage, whether it's cable or...
DSL.
DSL. And I guess these are... This little area right here, this white area right here, where there's no DSL or broadband coverage. There are plans available through, I don't know if it's the state of Michigan or federal government, I don't remember which, I have it off in my head, that we could enhance our broadband service to do that. But it's only four of those that don't have coverage right now, so it wouldn't help necessarily our areas that have the coverage. But there are areas that we could go after grant money, if we're interested at all.
Where's it at?
It's the little white panel, but where is that?
There's a section on McMillan Road, Tuesday, we're back to that.
There's, oh, yeah. Thank you. If we're interested in possibly ever going after some grant money, this would be more early to the, the race right now, because it hasn't already been announced. I would suggest that maybe we try to reenact that wireless committee. It was Charlie Joy, oh gosh, I'm going through names here. Maybe I have it here, here we go. Steve May, and yes, Charlie Joy, Connie Norman, and Jean Dor, to maybe have them do our homework for us. That was kind of a passion of theirs, and I don't know if that's of interest to us, but I would suggest maybe we reach out to them and say, hey, do you guys want to do some investigating, see what it, what it actually costs?
Yeah.
I think the gentleman that spoke to us said that it would cost around fourteen to sixteen thousand dollars a mile to get everybody in a mile hooked into their product, their program. But I don't know enough about broadband, nor do I know if they want to, that I don't really have time to take on an additional committee. But I don't know if we're interested in having that whole committee kind of reformed, and have them do some investigating for us.
Actually, I meant to say to broadband.
No, but broadband is the future. And they say if I house values, they're going to go up with fiber optics to your home versus the traditional cable or phone service.
You mentioned there was a spot in McMillan Road, at Miller Road. The gentleman that we met with said that that map that Carol passed out isn't necessarily all inclusive, that there are spots where a cable company might say, yeah, they should have service, but most people may not. And so, the guy that we met with said that if this was something we were really actually going to take up, that he would end up going throughout the whole township to find out all of the areas that...
I have the maps. I have contacted Comcast and Charter, told them I needed maps, so that when a resident calls me, I can see if they're in their areas, so I have...
Most maps aren't accurate.
They are. And they're confidential, because it, it has, yeah, they're very accurate.
Anyway, it was an interesting meeting, so I don't know if that's something that we would want, you would like me to reach out to these folks? And I'm sure Jan at this time would still be going to maybe see our creation. Are you okay with me reaching out?
Yeah, there is legislation going on right now that possibly is going to increase everybody's chances for broadband. Because if, if you notice, look at Chelby Township, they don't have any. There's a lot of areas that don't have any. And I think it's actually a bill that is before the legislators, stating, we need to increase this, how are we going to get money, which is there, and let...
Yeah.
It would hurt to ask them, and see what...
Just want to...
If they want to.
Alright, perfect. Kind of thing I got a free bill, I hope, you know?
What?
Yeah.
I think this, very good, you know, like here, over the natural area.
No, I thought we had our big map, I can't...
It's hard to tell, I mean, it's not a map, and you, yeah, you can...
I don't really have a broadband.
I want to say that's probably more northern, because if you see where Doc Lake is here, there's going to be more, it might be the very northern, but I think that's probably off Michigan, but like the backside of Station Moore's and Morgan Star, so, in case you don't, just from looking at it, might be the very northern edge, but not, not a... That's all I have. Oh, I just wanted to let you know, too, the election went off without a hitch. I am on our state audit, and I personally want, saw what appeared from the county, they'll be coming in and doing a national audit, and they'll do a hand count, so, I have had one, not many years, so...
Again, congratulations, you did a good job.
It was great. I'm sitting now, to the county by ten o'clock, and it's the fifth one there, so I thought we're good, I was six to seven, so, we're good.
Are there any other board comments or discussion? No, no, we're taking a motion to adjourn.
So, hold it a second.
Those figures signify by say and act?
Agreed.
A post, Bush, Harris. I know what I want to say, so, I'm ready, Carol. I know, I'm a spot, I mean, I guess you were in, and her, I guess, she said, well, you're just, there's only one, you're just... No, 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 as soon as the Board of Campers, your term actually begins, as soon as the Board of Campers certifies the election result, then you have Carolyn and Ted, the other Board, as the Board of Campers makes the decision. That's for the Board members, not for the special right.